6:30 PM. I'd like to call to order the City of Simamish Planning Commission regular meeting for November 3rd, 2016. I will start with the roll call, and I will start over on my right this evening.
Nancy Anderson.
Shannon Collins.
Frank Blau.
Eric Brooks.
Larry Crandall.
And I also have a couple of announcements to make. One is I'm announcing that Commissioner Philip Cherian has resigned from the Planning Commission. I didn't make that formal last week, so I just wanted to make that, and we really thank him for his service. It's sad when we lose someone, but -- and there are applications for in next year. If anybody's still interested, I believe we're accepting applications until December 1st for the Planning Commission for next year. Would also, since it was put in front of me, want to announce that Commissioner Crandall's grandson, Tori Anderson, was recognized as the CenturyLink High School Athlete of the Week, so he gets announced, and that's him. Let's give him a big hand and a round of applause. Okay. Moving on. We have an agenda for this evening. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the agendas are approved, and it's another vote for democracy. The minutes for 10:20 and 10:27 have been emailed around and distributed, and can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October 20th and October 27th, except for the -- I know that the hyperlinks aren't ready yet for the 27th.
I second that motion as stated.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes are approved. So now is the time in the evening for public comment. This is non-agenda public comment, and just to remind the audience, our agenda item this evening is the 2017 Docket for Comprehensive Plan Amendments. So if you're here to discuss and speak about something other than that, that now is your time. Or you can speak for both, I can't stop you. So I see we have Mary Wicker on the list for this evening.
Hello, my name's Mary Wicker. I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in the land of the Lorax. Anyway, I was so inspired by last meeting, I wanted to give you guys some visuals because they -- we had that excellent discussion about parking lots. So it was a part of the lid for 6E, 6F, and it was deciduous versus evergreen trees, 70%, 50%, and I think a picture's worth a thousand words. If I can get my clicker to advance the slides, oops. So here we've got the Simamish Plateau Water District, which I think is an excellent example of a parking lot, and you can see all the deciduous trees there with the beautiful fall colors. And if you get one more slide, just a little bit far back, that's what it looks like when you see it just with more of the evergreen look. When you look to the west, you can see there's quite a few number of stalls, and you see all the beautiful trees. It actually really hides the building, you kind of don't know they're there, except for the gigantic water tower. And if you look to the north, you can see somebody planted a row of evergreen trees quite a while ago, and they're all nestled next to each other, so there's no single soldiers. And as you go east to the -- behind the building, you can see a mix of tall trees, deciduous trees, which is really nice. And this is looking back west again, that's the evergreen trees, and I always forget how much darker it is when it displays in here. And then this is what evergreen bushes look like. So I just wanted to give you that visual based on Commissioner Collins' comments that had been sent in, and Frank talked a lot of it, and I know that you guys are going to move forward to the commission, so I thought some of these pictures might help you on that. I also wanted to talk about the health. So this is the Water District's 2 million gallon tank, and that tree's been there a long time. It used to be really beautiful, and then started looking like this on the other side because we were talking about the health of a single evergreen tree in a parking lot. And I think Highcroft kind of whacked out all the trees and built the houses, and I think it just really gets too much exposure, but I'm not sure. Also, just looking around the city where the roundabout is on Inglewood, sort of heading up towards Safeway on the right, you'll see all of a sudden a whole bunch of red evergreen trees there. And this is where the newest stormwater designs were put, and something must be happening that they're not getting the water flow because you can see dead trees all the way along. This picture doesn't show really well, but they're evergreen trees with really just sticks and almost no leaves anymore. And then just a couple times you guys have asked, "What's a totlot?" This is a totlot, and it's really cool because it's actually a recreation space for a very small development. And then you can see that grate there, that's actually the top of a stormwater vault, so I just wanted to show you that pictorially. You guys had also looked at Hollywood driveways, pervious concrete, that's just a mock-up of one. Usually they're shorter than that, but it was just a really good example, so you can drive on it, but the water flows through.
Is that in Simamish?
That's actually a picture from Germany.
I was gonna say, it does not look like the United States even.
I ran across it, and I thought, "What a great Hollywood driveway." There are ones actually around where I live, they're just usually only eight to 10 feet long. And then just one more picture. I've spoken a number of times about my concerns with seismic concerns for Simamish's neighborhood character, and if we start giving people from Lidd 15 more feet, here's looking south from the Water District at Highcroft, if you put 15 more feet, you wouldn't even be able to see the mountains. So I think for seismic, for preserving views and keeping neighborhood character, I think the 35-foot maximum height restriction should be kept. So anyway, that's my pictures for today, and thank you.
I had -- Ms. Wicker, you used the term "a single soldier," so you might want to explain to the audience that might not know what that term stands for.
Just when you have a big tree by itself, usually trees will grow in a grove, and like in the Plateau when I first was going to move here, there were so many trees, they were never alone, and if you cut down everything around them, they have a drip line, and if there's just one standing, usually the water will get it or the wind will take it, and when then that goes, other ones will go next to it, or if it's by itself, it just doesn't survive as well. So maybe that's my own term, I don't know that it's official. It is official. See? I learned something. Anyway, thank you. The Lorax, thank you.
We thank the Lorax, too. Any other public?
I just want to ask a question on the thing you have comprehensive plan and then there's public hearing, and then deliberation, and then you have public comments if you're on the agenda.
That's correct.
I guess I'd sort of like to make my comments before you deliberate.
So that would require a change to the agenda?
Part?
That would require a change to the agenda?
It'd be part of the public hearing.
Yeah, that actually, we can do that as -- we're going to do that as part of the public hearing, so you'll have a chance to speak before we deliberate.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So with that, we'll move on to the old business, which is the Comprehensive Plan Amendments for 2017 Docket.
Oh, okay. There we go. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Doug McIntyre. I'm a senior planner with the City of Simamish. I'm here with my colleague David Goodman. We're here to -- for the public hearing on the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Docket. As Chairman Blau mentioned, this is old business. We were here last week with an informal presentation on essentially the kind of high-level process as well as the eight applications that we received. So we'll kind of touch on essentially the same topics, same idea as last week, and then we will hold the public hearing, and then followed by the deliberations. So the growth management, the city plans under the Growth Management Act, the GMA, and the GMA allows for an annual amendment process to the comprehensive plan, and that is typically a process to where members of the public can suggest changes to either site-specific or site-specific properties or text of the comprehensive plan itself. The Growth Management Act provides a -- local jurisdictions a broad range, a broad ability to accept, reject, or defer comprehensive plan amendments. So essentially, the first step is to set the docket, which is what we're here for tonight. The amendments, generally speaking, fall into two categories. There are text amendments, and there are site-specific amendments. Those are usually in the form of changes to the land use map, which would then result in changes to the zoning map. We held an application process. There were, as I mentioned, eight applications that came in, and we closed the application period on September 30th. The docket, so tonight, we are seeking a recommendation on essentially setting the docket for a city council to review. The actual amendments themselves will be -- the ones that get included on the docket will be considered in 2017, and at that point, the city will collect further information and do a more full in-depth analysis of each proposal and come to a recommendation. An important point to make is that the items that are included on the docket will be asked to submit some additional information to facilitate that staff analysis, so what you have in your packets are -- is kind of more of the high-level details as we know them right now. Just to -- before I hand it over to David to talk about the specific applications, I wanted to outline the process. So as we mentioned, we were here last week with the work session. There was a pretty good discussion on the process, as well as a few questions on some of the applications themselves. We're here for the public hearing, and after the deliberations, a recommendation will be forwarded to the city council. The city council will hold a discussion on November 8th, followed by a public hearing on the 15th. I mentioned the deadline for additional materials being provided by the applicants to the city. That deadline is January 15th, 2017. And then, as indicated in the table, 2017 is when we'll do the full analysis of the docket. So with that being said, I will turn it over to David Goodman, and then we will open it up for questioning.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. This will be much the same as it was last week, but just wanted to set the stage again for the public hearing and remind you of the proposals that we're going to be giving to you to deliberate on. The first, I'll start off with the site-specific land use map amendment proposals. The first is from Debbie Trine, and she is proposing to change the future land use designation of her property on East Lake Simamish Parkway from R1 to R4.
David, wait, can you go back, please?
Go back a slide?
Yeah, just the first one. I wanted to make sure, so all of the yellow is R4? Is that correct? So all of the surrounding properties are R4?
So all of the yellow is R4. There is one small triangle right to the right of the highlighted property that is not part of this application, that is also R1. But you're correct that all the yellow is R1, and the orange up there is R6.
And most of all that, all of those R4 properties are within all the same hazard zones, environmental sensitive areas, all of that?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
The second proposal we have is from McLean Family LLC. This is at the very southern tip of the city, at the northern corner of Issaquah Pine Lake Road and Issaquah Falls City Road. This is about seven and a half acres, excuse me, that is currently zoned. The tiny little piece on the corner there is R12, and the larger orange parcel is R6. The proposal here is to change that to neighborhood business. The next proposal is approximately a little over 27 acres across seven parcels in the very northeastern corner of the city. Julie Imperatori applied on behalf of five property owners, and the proposal here is to change the future land use designation from R1 to R4. And then the final two land use map proposals were submitted by the city. The first is to change the future land use map designation of the Mars Hill property from R1 to community business. And just as a side note, the reason this is orange here is because on the future -- excuse me, on the current land use map, this property is zoned R6 interim, but on the future land use map, it's zoned R1. And the second, also from the city, is to change what is currently the Boys and Girls Club property, which is actually two parcels. The small triangle on the bottom is R18, and the larger parcel is R12. And this, of course, is at the intersection of 228th and Inglewood Hill. And the proposal here would be to change it from residential zoning to community business as well. We also received three text amendment proposals, two from the city and one from a citizen. The first two from the city I'll go over. The first is a proposed amendment to the capital facilities amendment. The proposal is to amend the background information to be consistent with the revised Storm and Surface Water Management Comprehensive Plan, the Surface Water Design Manual, the new Public Works standards, and the new Low Impact Development Codes. And the second is an amendment proposed to the transportation element to update the traffic impact fees and concurrency project list, and also incorporate the results of a new traffic model update that reflects new development in the city from the past four years, as well as the annexation of Klahani. And the final proposal is from Mary Wicker, proposed to amend the environment and conservation element, the background section. There are four proposed changes. One would be to include landslide hazard areas on the special overlays and districts map, which is the map that you see on the screen there. The second is to include the two additional sub-basins on the drainage sub-basin delineation map. The third is to add Zaccoose Creek as a stream of special significance. And the last is to update the text to reflect the upcoming adoption of the Storm and Surface Water Management Comprehensive Plan. So I'm going to briefly turn it over to Jeff Thomas to discuss a little more in detail of the decision in front of you today.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Following up on our presentation from last week, I wanted to talk a little bit about your role in this process, and then also what you should be considering in making your recommendations onto the city council. So docket process is, while it, on its surface, it may closely resemble a legislative review process. Staff brings something to you, you study it, you have a public hearing on it, you make recommendations to council, and then council essentially repeats the same process and then considers a decision in the form of a resolution. It certainly looks like a legislative review process on its surface. It's a little bit different, though. We're not reviewing this to approve or deny the proposal. We're taking a look at the proposals that have come forward and making a decision as to whether we're actually going to engage in that full legislative review moving forward. So think of it as, in your considerations here this evening after completing the public hearing, think of it as you're making a decision, is this something that fits within the city work program for the upcoming year, 2017? If it does, then that should be something that you should be looking to recommend, these items, to move forward to the city council with a positive recommendation for them to take action to put them on our city work program. If you don't, then you would consider an alternate recommendation would be to not have them put on the city's work program for 2017. The next question is then, how do you -- what do you think about when you're trying to get to that conclusion? There's two core elements that we as staff started with after September 30th to start thinking about for 2017. The first one is, these proposals, we went through each one individually, and the first question we asked is, is this change or amendment legally possible? If the change was ultimately to be approved after completing a legislative review process, would we be in compliance with growth management, or would we be breaking any laws? So to all of these, the answer was yes, we can legally make this change. The next question that we asked as staff is, and you have to keep in mind, this is a little bit like a Kodak moment in time. There was a particular day in October when we asked this question to ourselves and then produced the answer. Do we have the ability to process each of these in 2017? From a staff perspective, the answer was yes to each one. So as a cumulative total of eight proposals, the cumulative answer is also yes. This is where things start to get a little bit gray. That was staff's consideration of these eight individually and as a package. What happens, especially this year, being that we're going through a two-year biennial budget for 1718, the city council's getting ready to act on that here in the month of November. Council also starts to talk about what the work program looks like. Council sets the budget for the city, and they also set the work program for the city. So a couple of other things that I think are worthy to mention here, and also for you to think about a little bit this evening, are competing priorities, especially competing legislative priorities. For example, we as staff, we have -- we're now fully restaffed, I'm really pleased about that. We have planners that do work behind the scenes here at the city and help customers with permits and so forth. We can do X amount of work, and there's a balance. It's not all legislative review work, it's reviewing permits, it's providing customer service and such. The Planning Commission, your role is to, you're the first stop in the legislative review process. You meet, on average, 20 to 22 times a year, two meetings a month. We bring work to you, and then we help you manage your work program to move stuff through and get recommendations that we move on to city council. City council meets, you know, on average about 30 times a year, 30 to 33 times a year. So not only are they responsible for taking the work that we move through the Planning Commission that you make recommendations to them on, they're also responsible for the city budget, they're responsible for other ordinances and resolutions that involve other departments and don't necessarily involve development activity, and of course, then they're also responsible for a host of other things, other programs and services that the city provides that they need to make long-term financial and strategic decisions on. So in the overall balance of consideration, there are competing legislative priorities. There's going to be competing legislative priorities with the Planning Commission for next year, and certainly there will be for city council as well. I think the last thing that I wanted to add was, you know, I've run into this occasionally over time. I think there's a worthy question with one of the items this year, and that's the transportation element. But the question is, another factor that can come into play is, the information that's been brought forward in a docket proposal, has it been recently amended or otherwise worked on? So out of these eight before you, I would say there's one that that question kind of relates to, and that's the Public Works transportation element, doing some work on that. We just amended the transportation element last year as part of the 2015 comp plan update. So the question, reasonable question would be, well, why are we going back to amend it again? Public Works has identified some specific things that they want to go back and rework with updated data and information that's been collected here recently. They've made a case that, to us, that this is a worthy proposal, we really want to go and do this work in 2017. So hence, it's on the list, and I think they've adequately addressed that particular question in terms of the recency of the information. So with that, that actually concludes my comments. I think Doug and David, I think, are wrapped up with their part of the presentation, so I'll turn it back over to the chairman, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time, or once you complete the public hearing, so.
Okay. I just have one question, since we're being asked to sort of apply a capacity to this. There is a size discrepancy, or no, size difference, not discrepancy, between some of these proposals.
Sure.
Does the workload increase in a linear fashion for one parcel versus 10 parcels, say? How does that work apply? And when you evaluated these, did that, was that taken into account also? I'm assuming the answer's yes, but I'd just like to get some clarification.
Yeah, so I would agree with your self-imposed answer of yes. The answer is yes, and the answer is also yes, we did take that into consideration when we asked ourselves those questions back in October. To maybe go one layer deeper on the onion here, when you've got a proposal, I think one of them comprises of 20-some-odd acres versus maybe a singular parcel of a couple acres or one acre, you know, the equivalency is that it's one application, whether it's for 27 acres or two acres. But the level of analysis and the level of information and detail that's required to do a proper analysis for a legislative review of a proposal for 20-some-odd acres is certainly much greater than a parcel or parcels of smaller size affected area. So, you know, there's a lot more information that is required, obviously, for a larger parcel, there's going to be more data, there's going to be more things that we're going to need to look at. So yes.
And then, just to be clear, that this docket process is an annual process, if something is not brought to the 2017 docket, assumedly it could be brought back for the 2018 docket also?
Yeah, so we haven't offered a docket process in a couple of years, and the reason, so I think for most of you, I think all of you here on the Planning Commission, actually, this is the first time you've seen an annual docket process. The reason for that is because in the previous three years, we were undertaking a major comp plan update. So we suspended the annual, this was prior to my tenure here at the city, but the city did suspend its annual docket process for a couple of years to be able to complete the 2015 comp plan update. But moving forward, now that we're, we've kind of ended the comp plan, the major comp plan update, and we're entering now in an eight-year cycle before the next one's due, the city will be offering an annual docket process over the next several years. So 2018 would be the next one, for, next year for 2018 would be the next one.
And finally, if we accept some of these for the 2017 docket and something comes along, like we've had several items put on our work program calendar because of legal concerns and
Sure.
What happens if it, is there a process by which we can say, "You know what? We thought we could do that, but we can't"? I mean, is there some process around that, or is saying that we approve these for the docket, they have to be on the docket in that year?
Yeah, I think, you know, the idea is, certainly my ideal is, you know, out of respect to the folks that are going through the time and effort to assemble docket proposals and go through the process, we certainly, for any items that are docketed ultimately by the city council as a final decision, we certainly want to try and honor those folks that have brought, you know, this forward to process it in a timely fashion. And for us, that would be in 2017, the next year. Speaking to your question then specifically, hey, we, you know, we have some, you know, emergency work that comes up that's going to require, you know, legislative review. Are we legally binding ourselves to complete the review of these in 2017? The answer to that is no. But again, I think in the spirit of the fairness to, you know, both the folks making the proposals and in the public, we do want to process, we do want to try and process them in a timely fashion.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jeff? Okay.
Thank you.
Did you guys have anything more?
That's it for us.
Okay. Okay, with that being said, I'd like to open the public hearing for discussion of the Comprehensive Plan Amendments for 2017 docket, and I do have a sign-up sheet here, and I'm going to rotate past you, Mary, there, and then come back.
I have the last.
Okay. And so the first name I have is Stark Shelby. And if you could please give your name and address when you come to the podium, that'd be great. Thank you.
My name is Stark Shelby. My property is at 2856 244th Avenue Northeast. As some background, I purchased the property in the early 1980s. At time of purchase, the zoning was 9,600, which is the equivalent of R4 today. In the mid-'80s, zoning was changed twice. The first time, it was changed to a map that had no zoning at all under these properties. And then it was later changed from R, from 9,600 to R1. Unfortunately, no fair prior notice was given by King County, who was the government entity at the time. And so we have been stymied for over 30 years now of not being able to really do much with the property. And I'm very happy to report now that our team, many of whom are here tonight, the plans that we have to develop this, I think, is a win-win situation for property owners, for the city. Environmentalists are going to be happy with what we're going to do, and I don't think we have too many environmental issues on the property, like wetlands or that sort of thing, anyway. So So, we're trying to think of the, you know, rights and feelings and of everyone concerned, including the city. So when you make a decision, when it finally comes time to make a decision, everybody's going to feel pretty good about this. And I appreciate the city of Smamish that about three of us out of the five property owners that never received our fair and prior notice, a chance to make it right and will also give great benefit back to the city in terms of having the R4 zoning will make it possible to give money back for infrastructure, so the city will be way better off for doing this. And I think everything we're doing is, we're trying to do the right thing for everybody concerned and we just hopefully that this will include us also. Rather than spend much time on this, I do have a letter that, to whom it may concern, dated October 27, 2016, which I will leave here because I don't think it's, these letters are part of what you already have. So, since there are several people speaking after me, I will just conclude with, I appreciate the planning staff and the planning commissioners giving us the go-ahead to at least put this on the docket. It's very much appreciated and I think in the future, I think you'll be happy with the effort that we're putting out here. Thank you.
Next up is Michael Seals.
Evening Commissioners. My name is Michael Seals. I reside at 2880 244th Avenue Northeast. I'm Mr. Shelby's next-door neighbor. And in fact, we've known each other since we were, yeah. I appreciate you guys letting us put this on the docket for this year so that we can continue to find a way that we can have a win-win-win situation. It doesn't come up very often, but we plan on plating all of these at once. So there'll be no changes later down the road or additions for different zonings and that sort of thing. And specifically, I think that the stormwater facilities there could be done so that they protect that whole north slope there from 244th down the hill. And it's sort of getting that way out of hand. And the sanitary sewer system, more importantly, could do the same. It could be constructed so that not only will it adopt our, our plats, but it could be structured and, and placed so that the project across the street to the, to the west, Rodmore Estates, who are all on septic system, they've been there for, I think, close to 30 years. Sooner or later, they're probably going to need to switch to sewer and that would be there for them to hook up to based on the systems problems they have. I don't, you know, we're all going to, we're all going to speak to about the same thing, so I don't want to just keep reiterating and reiterating, but it, it has been a 35-year slosh for me to get, to get to this point. Every time we tried to do something, they changed the zoning, they changed this, the moratorium that, the moratorium that. So we're excited to get something done with the proper structure, the proper sizing, that will not cost the city anything. You won't be floating bonds or any of that sort of stuff. And for that very reason alone, I would think it would be good to really examine this thoroughly so that we can get a fair hearing out of this. I guess that's about it. Okay, thank you. Oh, I also have a letter also. It's a little longer than his. I've only got one copy, so I'll give it to him over there.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you. Next up is Jadiv.
Jadish.
Puvadi?
Jagdish Puvadi.
Okay.
So my name is Jagdish Puvadi. My wife, Lakshmi Puvadi, we own the two northernmost properties in this, these parcels, 3100 244th Avenue Northeast and 3108 244th Avenue Northeast. Those are the two properties that we own. So we also wanted to apply for the rezoning of those properties, mainly because if we all go through together, everything will there look uniformly. And the, one of the current state for the properties is, both of my properties are on well. To get water into the property behind takes actually quite a bit of money. So if I were to do that, we have to do a lot of short plating and everything, so which will be uneven compared to what these guys have. So doing all these properties together and develop them uniformly with the sewer as well as with the water would be a great addition to those facilities. The other thing that I would ask you to take a look at is, last time when I came over here, so you guys were talking about rezoning and community development as well as high craft and all of that and traffic in the area. By doing the rezoning of these properties that are very close to 202, actually, it may be better for the city to have the traffic right there and houses right there and get on to 202 very easily. So one of the, you see all along the 244th that we've been developing without any additional facilities of the roadways or the streetlights over there. So I think the overall look of that 244th is changing. To keep it uniform, all the properties to be developed all at the same time and rezoned at the same time would be a great thing. So, I request you to consider our application for rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kermit Reinhardt.
Hi. My name is Kermit Reinhardt. I live at 2824, 244th Avenue Northeast. And I noticed my neighbor has, surrounding me changed a great deal. And it seems like I got the oldest house in the neighborhood. Well, anyway, long story for that one. I bought the, that property at late 1998 round there. And so, I didn't know that was city of Smamish. I didn't do my homework when I bought it. But anyway, early year 2000, the city gave me a letter says they want to annex the entire neighborhood in that area. So I was so happy and I called the city up and the city said, yeah, we're going to adopt the, same rule applies to city of Smamish to our neighborhood. And so I was delighted, but it took about seven or almost eight years, we got the letter back and says you guys are annexed. And low and behold, I called the city up and asked them, what is zoning? Well, we changed our mind and we kept the King County rule, which is R1, to adopt into the city of Smamish rule. So low and behold, and I was downtrodden. So, I noticed going up and down the hill, the Murray Franklin Toll Brothers, they're literally stone-throwing distance from my house and they're all at R5s. So, it seems like it'd be beneficial, we get together, that change the zoning to R4 and that'd be mutual benefit for the neighborhood. It would look the same and bring it up to the current codes with a better sewer system and septic, I mean, draining. And just the whole landscape will be the same versus a patches, you're all different. So, anyway, I ask you to have that zoning change with the rest of this group to R4 to benefit the city and to benefit our neighborhood rather than we're all by yourself. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary Victor.
I don't have my name.
I don't have your name.
I signed up over there, but nobody's on it.
Oh.
It's the second page.
Sorry, we have a second page over there. Sorry, I only have the first page. Why don't you come up and speak then?
I'm Julie Imperatori. I live at 4745 Second Avenue Northwest in Issaquah. I've been a resident on the plateau before I moved down there for 44 years. Under circumstances, all of these properties sort of came to our attention at one time. And as, to change it to, three of the property owners bought their property with thinking it was R96, which, of course, we found out it wasn't, nor were they informed by anybody that their zoning was, was going to be changed. These properties all could be short-platted. And with doing that, you'd have one acre size as best it could be, but most of them perked. They've already looked at it because some of these people owned the property a very long time, so they know that whether it perked or not. So you could end up with one piece of property with seven septic tanks on it, another piece with five, which is not really a real smooth way to do it if you have an opportunity to bring sanitary sewer. The only way that can be done is all the properties are done at one time at R4 because to do it at one acre lots, the cost is so prohibitive, nobody could do it. I, I, you have an opportunity for getting road right away, which is a very fortunate thing because I have seen some real serious mistakes that Issaquah has made when they could have gotten road right of way and didn't take it. And wouldn't let somebody use their property and now they give their it for that property now. One of which is around Newport Way, as you know, Front Street is wall-to-wall traffic. And of course, they lost the opportunity on the southwest bypass. So I think what we have to do is think a little bit ahead. There's also only limited ways off the plateau. It's always been a contention since the very first community plan, which was done up here in 1974. And so the thing is that if you can get right away along one of the few places that you can build a road because there's availability to do it, it's a very good idea to do it. It could be a condition of zoning or whenever you want to put the condition on, but the people who are willing, are willing to give you the right of way at this time. Stormwater would be held in one large facility, not many little ones that are, because they can fail more easily because they're not maintained except by the owner where your stormwater facility would be maintained by the city. Also, the same with septic. You wouldn't have a bunch of septic tanks. And some of these people you can see have held the property a pretty long time, so they're sort of getting to a point where they're probably going to start thinking about short plating if they, you know, we can't come up with another solution. But again, you'd have lots of septic systems where now you have few. And they fail. And so, under, and also too, is you can get one piece of property all at one time or 27 acres and have a lot of control over how things are done. There is a wetland, one of them, which has already have a short plat on it and it's part of the packet I first sent in because it has been analyzed by a surface water management guy and it's been approved by the city. So, we know where that problem is, but it's the only one that I'm aware of. And it said there that I was insistent that this would help congestion, will only help congestion when you build a road. I'm insistent that it's an opportunity that I think that we should look at and have a chance to get, as they say, the right of way that you would need to build 244th. And I'd make a suggestion to you, if you get King County to give you those last two lots, you'd have control over one quarter of that interchange, which eventually is going to have to be dealt with, with more than a light. And so if you, you got those last two pieces of property down there that were in this, you would have, and get them annexed in or whatever, how you, you'd get a control of them. But Smamish should have control all the way down to 202, than the last two lots. You know, I can tell you, if you try to build a roundabout and work with King County as a jurisdiction, you probably have more fun days. So, that's pretty much what I want to say and I think that it's timely to do this because you have all the property owners, you know, concurring on doing the same thing rather than trying to accumulate them at another time. I can tell you, it's putting properties together, that usually doesn't turn out to be the easiest thing to do. So we sort of have a little jump on it because everybody's in a cooperative mood and wants to go through with this in this particular fashion. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you. Mary?
My name is Mary Victor and I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Smamish. So I submitted a text amendment to the comp plan because this has been a big year for stormwater, so you've seen me a lot and been to a lot of meetings. But the stormwater comp plan is actually from 2001 and that's getting updated. The city's first comp plan, I believe, was 2003 and that's 2015. And when you look at it, the information is there, but they have some background. And in the background, there's a couple of things missing. One is particularly for landslide hazard areas. So King County in 1990 first established what they called their sensitive areas map folio. And it covered wetlands, streams and flood hazard areas and hundred-year flood plains, erosion hazard areas, which had a lot of special code in it, landslide hazard areas, seismic hazard areas, and then also coal mine hazard areas, but those are mostly down in Issaquah, so they didn't apply. And then the city has adopted King County's Surface Water Design Manual several times in 1998 and in 2005, or sorry, they skipped the 2005, went to the 2009 one and you're looking at adopting the 2016 one. So what the city's been using is a bifurcated manual of 1998 for less than an acre and under so many square feet and 2009. And it's all going to get moved over to 2016. And in watching the City Council go over that, I remember Nancy Witten saying, hey, you've kind of taken the old one, got rid of it, got the new one, and it's really, really important to keep protection for the sensitive areas or the environmentally critical areas. And she noted that a lot of things were missing. So I know that council went through that and I was kind of new listening, so I wasn't exactly understanding that. But when the maps came out, I looked and the erosion, so the map and the comp plan I really want updated, it has the erosion hazard area. I believe it has the wetlands and the bogs and the lakes in it. It does have streams, I think. It does mark the erosion hazard area, but the landslide hazard area map, which you guys have had since 1990, is just missing and like not there at all. And I think it's really important to put that in. And then since so much is happening with stormwater, there's a few other small changes for your renaming basis and stuff. So it's a pretty small update, but I think it's important and also kind of dovetails with what the city has actually recommended anyway for doing that. So, on behalf of landslide, I would like to speak and I do, I do have the actual King County map folio I can give to her if anybody wants to see it or you guys can have it as a record. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Does anyone else wish to speak for the public hearing this evening? Okay, not seeing anyone at 7:20. I will close the public hearing and we can begin our deliberations. So, what I would like to say is that these will be going to City Council for further inclusion on the docket. This is sort of the first step in the process. And I know that there are several other large things on the docket and there's a lot more, I'll use the word chatter, going on about the docket currently. We're looking at things like sign code amendments, the urban forestry management plan, and some things that we're legally bound to address in the short term, like housing elements in, in the comp plan. So, but I do So, but I do believe that our document, our comp plan, is a living document. I'm not much of an originalist, and I, it is my first docket process, and I'm actually rather pleased with the fact that this process even exists, that we can, there's been many times when I was not a member of the commission, when I was just a member of the public, when I was like, if I could just change that! And so, I'm actually kind of pleased to see this, this process at work here, and I'm, I hope that we continue to encourage that within our city, within the limitations of what we can get done in the time that we have. Any questions or comments from commissioners?
I kind of made a promise that I wouldn't speak too long or too much tonight, so I'm just going to say echo or ditto to what the chair said, and add a couple points. Hearing the community development department say they can tackle this, that's great, because now I wouldn't want to load, put the workload any heavier. And the other thing is to see, I don't know, it's joint or cooperative community effort, there might be a lot of redundant things. We have a group of people here that seem to be on the same page and looking for the same outcome, and that, to me, I can't speak for city council, but that, I think that's great for our city. And finally, speaking of our city, this is a very transparent action we're working on right now with the documents, and hopefully, those citizens that are not here tonight, like, saves Smamish, won't be surprised when they, when this comes across, so.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all of the recommended, oh, sorry, all the recommended proposals for placement on the 2017 comp plan docket.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We will move these forward recommendation to city council to put these on the docket. Do we have a date for handoff to council for that? Will we be presenting that, so that people can come and speak then also? I know you put up the calendar, you might want to just remind people in the audience when that is.
Yeah, we can put up the calendar again, yeah.
Yep. There you go.
So, first touch with city council is November 8, and city council will hold a public hearing on November 15, sorry.
Will we be doing a formal handoff of this, or are we just going to give it as-is to them?
As, as, yes, as it is. This is the, you have now recommended the setting of the docket as, as proposed in the package.
The, yeah, so the November 8 meeting begins at 5:00 PM?
Yes.
I made sure they moved that a little bit earlier.
And the 15th is at 6:30, like usual.
So, Mr. Chairman, sorry to have to break the news to you on camera, but you're going to have a busy evening next Tuesday.
I am.
So, Tuesday evening next week, the council will be receiving your, your being the Planning Commission's recommendations on the housing element amendments that you moved forward last week, your recommendation here this evening on the 2017 docket, and then, in addition to that, two public works matters, I believe the lid code amendments, as well as, if I'm recalling correctly, the surface water design manual, perhaps.
We're going to be there all night.
So, so the council looks forward to hearing from you, Mr. Chairman, next week.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay. I would encourage my fellow commissioners to attend that meeting with me and be my, I don't hear any support for that, though, but I'm going to say you all agreed with me on everything, and
That's right.
Okay.
Anything else, Steve?
Yeah, we, technically, we have a public comment period also, but I think we pretty much got everyone, unless somebody else has a burning desire to speak to us and tell us about anything interesting.
Sure. This is your last chance.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close the public, well, I need, actually, we have to do this formally, hold on, one second.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting adjourned at 7:30.